Good evening. It is now six o'clock and I hereby call the special meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. If you could please read the temporary procedures.
The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of two minutes. When addressing the commission via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you are participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Toledo, if you could please lead us in the pledge.
Absolutely.
Ready, begin.
If we could get a roll call, please.
Yes. Richard Way, District Two, is absent. Robert Scagliotti, District Three.
Present.
Robert Gibson, District Four.
Present.
Celeste Toledo-Bocanegra, District Five.
Present.
I do believe we have a quorum.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Richard Way has indicated in advance of the scheduling of this meeting that he was not going to be available. He is currently out of the country. Also, the planning commissioner see for District One is currently vacant and efforts for an appointment are underway. For planning commission procedural rules, the commission consists of five appointed members and three members present constitute a quorum such that the meeting may proceed. Approval of any legislative recommendation such as a general plan, adoption, or zone change requires the affirmative vote of at least three members regardless of how many commissioners are present. All other votes require a majority of the quorum. Because there is a quorum, the commission may move forward with the public hearing for today's agenda's item. However, if the preference of the commission is to wait for Commissioner Way's return or to wait for a full commission to hear an item, the commission also has the ability to continue the public hearing for an item to a date certain, which will not require renoticing the item, or to a date uncertain, which would require renoticing. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Can I get an acknowledgement of certificate of posting?
Acknowledged.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. On to 5.1. Do we have a presentation for the audience?
Mr. Chair, we have our project manager Stan Ketchum, who is gonna be on Zoom to provide the project description of the item 5.1.
Where was the slides regarding going forward? Please, Bree, before, yeah. If we could have Bree provide those slides.
Good evening. Bree Mobius with Hefner Law. I'm the county's outside counsel on the landfill expansion. And we have two presentations with your commission could decide. One, I think what Abraham was referring to is by our project manager on the landfill itself. Or if the commission wanted to discuss continuing it, we have some potential dates.
Yes. Is there a consensus of the commission to talk about continuing the item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Please continue with that discussion.
Okay. So in hearing from the commission, we've heard there's interest in hearing some options where there might be a full commission and Commissioner Way being back and with availability and how do I share? Sorry. Okay. So the first date that would be available would be October 25th, which would be a special meeting. And the commission has, the chair has discussed potentially breaking up into multiple meetings and doing it by topic. So what we tried to put together was a proposal for your commission's consideration and for the public's consideration tonight as well, what would be the proposed schedule and the topics covered. And we would also hear from the applicant on the proposal and whether they would agree with that proposal. And once I can pull it up, it has the topics. What I would encourage your commission to do is to look at the topics that we've broken them up. If there's topics that you would like to hear more about, it's a big project, there's a lot of moving parts in it. So if there's topics that you want staff and consultants to go into more detail, then we can break those up by dates. There it is up there now. And then also from the public, I believe the commission will take public comment if there's additional topics that are not up here that the public would like to hear more in detail about. So what we proposed up here is on the 25th, it would be a special meeting at six o'clock, starting with the project description. And going over with the requested approval, so what the applicant is seeking. Then we would provide an overview of the secret process, discuss the alternatives that were analyzed in the environmental document, discuss the proposed haul routes. So there's a proposed route, and then there are two alternative haul routes also analyzed in the EIR, and the commission will be deciding what will be the haul route, and discuss noise and air quality related to truck traffic for the project. Then we would also present on the fair share road impact analysis that calculates the cost to the county roads from the expansion project. And then the commission would take public comment limited to those topics on that evening. Then we would return on Friday, October 27th, again at a special meeting at six o'clock to discuss the mitigation measures. So in the California Environmental Quality Act, there's an environmental analysis, and then it requires the county to adopt mitigation measures for all significant impacts. We would go over what the mitigation measures are for the project, and then also the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit. We would also discuss what the EIR determined to be significant and unavoidable impacts, which include greenhouse gases, aesthetics, and cumulative impacts. And then we would also do a presentation on groundwater and water supply. We received a lot of public comments on that topic. And then lastly, that evening would close with an economic analysis in the landfill operating agreement. And again, public comment would then be received that evening on those topics. And then the proposal is to return on Monday, October 30th, again at 6:00 PM. And staff would return with any questions. So if the first two days, if there's additional areas that you have questions that we weren't able to answer or that the public does, we would return that day to be able to provide those answers. Or if there's any requested revisions to the project approvals, as staff has presented them, we would return with that as well. And then again, hear any remaining public comment, and then the planning commission would deliberate and make a decision. So this is just a proposal, but if there's changes that you'd like to make to it, or additional items, or break it up differently, that would be what we could decide today.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment about this particular item?
There is public comment. Chair, would you like to hear them?
Please.
All right. So we're gonna start within chambers. If you provided me a speaker card, I will call your name and you will approach the podium. Robert Thorpe, the fourth, you may approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
All right, just go. All right, Robert Thorpe. I moved to Hollister a couple years ago. Daily life has its distractions from work, bills, sports, et cetera, and it's hard to pay attention to everything going on in your community. Luckily, my mom, Bridget Thorpe, and her friends caught on to this landfill expansion trying to sneak through and created Don't Dump on San Benito.org to get the word out. It's a slap in the face to every citizen in this county that has a real possibility of having their air, water, and land polluted by such a massive expansion of the existing John Smith landfill. Landfills are never in the best interest of the environment and are a Pandora's box of future problems. Look at the Crazy Horse landfill in Salinas, which is deemed a superfund. What is a superfund? A superfund is a site in any land in the U.S. that has been contaminated by hazardous waste and identified by the EPA as a candidate for cleanup because it poses a risk to human health and/or the environment. In the words of Randy "Motorman" Savage, "There's one guarantee in life and that there's no guarantees in life." The only guarantee is that this landfill expansion in 10, 20, or 30 years won't become a superfund. Let Santa Clara deal with their own problem and stop dumping on San Benito for pennies on the dollar. The profits most likely won't come close to repairing the damage.
Thank you.
Okay. Annette Perez, please approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
Hello, my name's Annette Perez, and I'm just coming before you just to really just ask that you don't approve this landfill expansion. I don't think this landfill expansion is good for our county. There are a lot of people today who work full time, have kids, and are unable to get here and to let you know. But I hear a lot of people telling me that this is a bad idea for our county. To look for a landfill as a revenue source is not a, it's a liability. I think you are not thinking about what could happen to the landfill in the future, the toxic waste that is already in there, a plume that was created by it long ago. I mean, the liabilities go on and on. Our groundwater contamination, the liners are not guaranteed for 65 years, so we will have leachate in our waters and our system. And I don't think that you want to do this to our county. I mean, I just can't see you want to do this to our children, our family. You have these trucks driving by our schools, creating all those extra greenhouse gases and the noise level that this landfill will bring. I know that we have extra houses coming. Those houses, yes, they will need a place to dump. But why should we be a landfill for five other counties and be a solution? They should have to come up with their own solutions. The current landfill has what, like a bidding situation. So San Martin is bringing us all their landfill and dropping it off. I know right now we're in our 15 years of useful life, and we don't have any out-of-county trash coming in, but that's only because of where we're at. We have 100 acres across the street from the landfill that we already own. I just hope that you will not take this land that is given you for a dollar. It's like a deal with the devil. They're telling you, hey, you will take this land for just a buck. Well, guess what? That is not what's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Elvia Skow, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Good evening, commissioners and general public. My name is Elvia Skow, 60-year San Benito County resident and part of a farming family of 130 years in the county. I stand before you today as a concerned member of our community. My first question would be, why should San Benito County be the dumping ground for five other counties? We still have years of capacity for our county waste. Why the rush? At hand tonight, we have an EIR months in preparation being rushed through with little discussion or allowing time for our community input. Even your other commissioner requested to have this table until he returned from a scheduled leave. Why the rush? What first jumped out to me was the potential plume leakage, which encumbers numerous wells, including housing tract water systems, private wells, in the potential plume area. As you must consider the long-term environmental consequences of your decisions, please remember you are planning commissioners. What about all the other planning units in the close proximity? The above-mentioned plume includes our property of organic vegetables. Will our kids, grandkids, great-grandkids still be able to farm organically in our county due to the polluted water? It was noted in the past documents provided to this commission that the pit liners for the dumping area have a guaranteed life for 30 years, but we are talking 75 years, and a residual for eternity, not a very good guarantee, putting residents of San Benito at risk. Can you assure us that the dumping of hazardous waste will not become an environmental as well as a financial liability to San Benito County taxpayers? If you as commissioners have been watching the news, you would find that firms in at least two of the counties being allowed under this.
Thank you.
Mike Peckin, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Mike Peckin. I live in nearby Monterey County. For decades, I've been involved in residential housing here in San Benito County. I have been involved in the past, and I will be involved in the future. And the state of California has stated that we are under a housing crisis. We are under specifically residential housing crisis that the county of San Benito and the city of Hollister and other jurisdictions are attempting to meet. The planning, the planning department has prepared a report for you, which I support. I support your planning department's recommendation that provision be made for the needs of your community for health and safety for the coming decades. The present facilities that are being discussed, meaning the landfill that is out at John Smith, I understand from the reports, was open in 1968. And that's a half a century ago. A half a century ago, people were planning, and that's why this community is healthy and this community is a good place to live. Where is the next half century? You've lived on a half century that has been planned and has been reported and has mitigated as best as possible. And I'm asking you to consider that I don't like noise. I don't like dirt. I don't like refuge. It can't be discussed easily, but it's a necessity. It's a health and it's a requirement. And I ask you to meet the next half century by following your planning department recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Bosinfiao, I really apologize. You may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Michael Goschunfiao, have a business here. I use the landfill. I'm a big client of theirs. Take a fair amount of waste up there. You know, I'm looking at this community and how it's growing. You know, we sort of set it up to invite people from up north to move down this way. And we have to be able to accommodate that growth. And we need to think 50 years out. And, you know, I don't want to see where we turn out like Santa Cruz, where we're short timers and trying to look for other options. We have real estate here. It could be done in the right way. It requires all our input. I don't want to see our rates shoot up, you know, 300%. So I like Mr. Peckin here. I am encouraging what's been proposed to the planning commission, and I am for the expansion. And I'm looking out for my neighbors. I'm looking out for my senior friends that are on fixed incomes and have costs like that shoot up. So that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Julian Perez, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Julian Perez, and I'd first like to begin by saying thank you for your time and hearing myself out as well as others on the matter of the landfill expansion. Now, I know this topic is quite controversial, but I'd like to share my opinion on why we should consider expanding landfill from the perspective of resident with the background in the waste industry. First and foremost, taxpayers would be incurring additional cost. If we were to deny the landfill expansion, I question where our trash would go a decade from now. At that point, we'd be forced to build a transfer station or have residents try to let our county dump trash. The startup cost involved building a transfer station would cost tens of millions of dollars potentially, and I don't believe that's worth a dollar spent as a community. Additionally, transfer stations charge two to four times more than our current landfill prices. So taxpayers would have to incur that additional cost as well. If we opt to dump our trash out of the county, it makes it challenging for residents to dispose their waste, which will only worsen the current problem we have with trash along the side of the road and in alleyways. Now, secondly, anytime we have an opportunity to partner with a large corporation like Waste Connections, I personally feel we should absolutely take advantage of it. Simply, they're a giant we can lean on. In my humble opinion, part of smart growth entails responsible planning and maximizing our resources to benefit our community. Waste Connections could be a tremendous resource, considering that they could help with the reducing cost to taxpayers, improving roadways, assisting with parks, and so forth. Perhaps as a compromise. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Patterson, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience. My name is Sandy Patterson-Demark, and I live on Fairview Road. These trucks that are bringing waste from Santa Clara County were supposed to stop last year. They never stopped, folks. They come right down Fairview Road, they come in at 11 o'clock at night and they go until 2 o'clock in the morning, because I hear them. I'm a night owl. So what the county said that they'd stopped was a lie. And also, there's a transfer station over in San Martin already. My sister lives in Santa Clara County, so you have, your information is incorrect. And her bill just went up like $25 to $30, and that's what they ship over here. Do the right thing. You know what? Take just our trash. Quit bringing five counties in here. It's not about the money, it's about the community here. You people need to think about these people out here, not yourselves and not making money. The county needs to learn how to budget and how to run it. This community needs to survive, and it won't when you bring five other counties' trash into San Benito County. Quit thinking about just money. Think about the community. Think about the people that live here, that have lived here for hundreds of years, like the Scows. I've been here 51 years. I was born and raised in Gilroy. Come on, folks. It's not about the money, it's about the people here. And also, I'd like to know how you were able to go from three minutes, because Robert's Rules of Order says three to five minutes, not two. So I'd like to see that, what your authority was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Levy, you may approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
I'm Paul Levy. I live in the Best Road Mutual Water Company service area, which is right alongside John Smith Road. I'm not going to talk about the water, because I think that's been adequately addressed, although I still have lots of issues. I will talk about some experiences we had, we've been here for 25 years, some experiences we had many years ago, driving down John Smith Road with my wife and her sports car and low-profile tires, getting flats every month. It got to the point where we're going into San Benito Tire, they're saying, you're back again? And so subsequently to that, was that a public lunch, I think, a community, I mean, a chamber of commerce, and I sat next to a San Benito County planning officer, and he was telling me about how the county rakes John Smith Road with a magnetic rake every week at that time. I don't know if they still do that or not. And I thought, well, that doesn't make sense to be driving down that road anymore. So we stopped driving, and guess what? We got no more flat tires. The point of that is, those trucks drop stuff on the road, which can cause hazards. What I really want to talk about is an alternative. I haven't heard too many about the alternatives here and to this expansion. And so I'm thinking, if this is so profitable and environmentally safe, why not put it somewhere where it makes more sense? And I'd say, put it on our front door rather than our back door. By that, I mean, I'm looking at the foothills on the backside of Stradiverti, next to that stinkpot known as Z-Best, and thinking, why not put it over there? It eliminates the need for out-of-county dumpers to drive through Hollister, which is unavoidable, with all those undesirable and heavy trucks, keeps them off our street and residential neighborhoods. It would also be close to existing major highways and maybe even a Highway 101 access as was proposed by Stradiverti. Could utilize existing heavily air-polluted area of the county, which is in proximity to that foul stinkpot, as I say, known as Z-Best. And the best part of all is, it's served by a rail line. So what could that mean? You bring all it in by rail from wherever you want. Bring a little spur up there and create a new landfill, and it's good to go.
Thank you.
So I'd say, say no to this and yes to that.
Tom Armbruster, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tom Armbruster. I live here in Hollister, and I drive 25 every day. I'm a commuter, which the majority of the people here in Hollister do. They're heading up to the other counties. I'm out of here at 2:30 in the morning. There's no traffic. It's nice. Coming back by 3:30, the 101 and the 25 interchains is beginning to get jammed, if not already. During the summer, it's even worse. There is no such thing anymore than taking a back road. Take the back roads, I always hear it. It's just nonsense, because everybody knows how to do it. The statement that our roads are bad or damaged is an understatement. They're broken and they're deteriorating. There are some that are just simply, over the next couple of years, with heavy rains possible, will just turn to dust. And that's the primary county roads. If you look up into the hills, up behind Santa Ana Valley, or if you go to Lone Tree Road, those roads are almost gone. In the next couple of years, you're going to have to have a four-wheel drive or a buggy and a horse. That's where we're going. I think you guys could be real heroes. The people who I've talked to, it's becoming a respect thing, that you're backing building developers, you're backing a garbage company incorporated in Canada. For what reason? The financial attorneys for the county have already said, don't do it. If you break even on a million, a million and a half dollars, that's a drop in the bucket, even for a county like ours. Why would you do it if you just pushed a calculator and found out what the numbers are?
Thank you.
Bridget Bowman-Thorp, please approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Glad to be here and have the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to make a comment to that business owner. I hope he's aware that we're bringing in 2,000 tons, or you want to approve 2,300 tons of garbage a day, that's seven days a week, 361 days a year, for 50 years. Do you think this will be appealing to your business when people find out that all these garbage trucks are coming to this town? I think everybody will run the other way. And I think, you know, I'm very afraid this could be like the Malpitas. Yeah, so think about the impact of the garbage that you want to import. This is, if you think green, you know, and you think about recycle and reduce the garbage and don't bring it in, in the first place, and look at other options. San Benito would be even better than Santa Cruz and Monterey County. They would all come here because we respect the air, the water, we respect the organic farmers. That's how you earn respect for your county, not by importing garbage. And I want people to know the greenhouse gas emissions, which is CO2, it's sulfur dioxide, it's all these gases that are coming from the landfill flare for the next 50 years. We're like the epitome of an air polluter. And even with, by the way, the greenhouse gas emissions shows in a 948-page report. The summary was, it will be significant and unavoidable. Why would you bring in a huge air polluter? Is this the future? Is this the future for San Benito County? I think you can do better. This is, this is not the future.
Thank you.
Barbara Tadeo, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
My name is Barbara Tadeo, and I live right off of John Smith Road at Heatherwood. Three things that I want to bring up. One is that you still have not fixed Fairview Road, and I'm tired of my car being wrecked. It even wiped my radio out and my car hitting the potholes. So you're going to do that again, bringing all these trucks in, and even if you go down, straight down 25, think of the damage it's going to do to the roads. Two, no one's looked at the fact that this is bringing in arsenic and manganese into the aquifers. Unfortunately, I have well water, and the well water is being contaminated with this, and it's been documented. Third, no one's looked at the cancer rate. I've lost two cats this year to cancer because they drink the well water. And I'm, my other cats, we're able to drink bottled water, but no one's looked at that, not even the animals or the people that live in the area who have passed away from cancer or who have attracted cancer. So those are the three areas that concern me, especially if you go down Best Road with these trucks. Think of those houses that are right there on Best Road, the diesel fuel and whatnot that's going to contaminate their houses, because I've seen it happen at my house, the contamination that's gone on, and the contamination and whatnot that's gone on through Fairview, and the damage that, I was told three years ago that you were going to fix Fairview Road. All you've done is fix a pothole, which makes it worse, especially in the winter. Like I said, I have, you know, wiped out my radio, let alone, you know, the front end of my car hitting the potholes. Those are my concerns, and I really feel it should be up by Z-Best, and I made that suggestion five years ago, when all of this information came up.
Thank you.
Rudy Picha, you may approach the podium.
Hello, folks. My name is Rudy Piche, and I'm a longtime Hollister resident, and I represent literally hundreds of longtime Hollister residents, all of which who live on the Fairview Road. And because we live there, we are uniquely qualified to kind of have a say in what goes on and be observant as to what's been going on. Over the past few years, increased semi-truck traffic has created just a ton of vehicle traffic on Fairview. If you look at that and the fact that we have numerous housing developments coming online, between the wraparound Cielo Vista, the Santana Ranch, and other housing developments coming online, I think you guys can easily see that there's a potentially volatile mix of semi-truck traffic, Amazon truck traffic, and motor vehicle pedestrian traffic, all going through the Fairview corridor. I've seen it myself. Not only that, my parents live on the corner of Santa Ana and Fairview, and I can attest that we have heard just pounding along Fairview Road, engine braking techniques such as Jake braking. It's totally noisy, it's totally rude, it's super loud, and the roads are getting totally thrashed. This expansion, you can already see it when you go to Rich Mark Golf and Country Club. You can see it above the hills. You can see it, it's an eyesore. Beautiful rolling hills, a dump. And I really think, you guys, it's almost irresponsible to grow it five times larger. I understand, like a lot of people, growth is imminent, right? We need to grow, the dump needs to grow to give us a little more than 15 years of use. But under the current plan, I really feel, in my heart, and I think a lot of you, if you search your hearts too, the current configuration, the current plan is just irresponsible. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Barry Katz, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to help you guys out a little bit, because I know you've got 2,000 pages to study here for this thing. It's pretty complicated. Thankfully, we've had quite a few people studying it for quite a while, so we have a little bit of a handle on it. I want to turn your attention to the Appendix C of the EIR. Around page 150, you'll see a list of chemicals that were tested in the air leaving the dump through by way of the ammonia, not ammonia, the methane flare-off system. You can see the gases that were tested there. I shortened it for you, and I'll leave this with you, because I took out the ones that tested negative. So you have 23 toxic chemicals that are coming out of that flue, most of which are chemicals that never should have gotten into that dump, because it's just a regular landfill, it's not a toxic waste landfill. These chemicals should not be coming in. But clearly, from the number and the quantities of toxic materials that are coming out of the exhaust, they are coming in. And if you multiply the dump nine or tenfold, you're going to get nine or 10 times as much. This is a water waste hazard risk, because I know these dumps are not set up for toxic waste containment, and it's certainly an air pollution risk. These chemicals include Freon, acetone, isopropyl oak alcohol, toluene, ethyl benzene, and that's pretty much all, except, these other people are saying something really important. When most counties consider a landfill, they consider sites. You have seven alternates on this plan, they're all in the same location. Maybe a landfill for the county makes sense. I don't know about expanding it to include other counties, I don't agree about that part. But I think you have no alternatives at all.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob Bernoski, please approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Thank you for holding this hearing. I'm a little bit confused as how the cards say three, but I'm limited to two, but I'll try to keep it under two. In fact, I know I will. So listen, I want to thank you, most of all, for, if this is your plan, to wait until you actually have a full commission before making any decisions whatsoever. All five supervisory districts should be represented, and, you know, if Fairview Road ends up being part of the route, I mean, it impacts everybody in North County, most of all the people that have schools in North County, and school buses have to get, and cars with kids have to get to Spring Grove School, by way of example. My other request is, there's a lot of concerns being raised tonight, and I don't know, and I'll be the first one to admit, I don't know how the planning commission truly works, but I hope that complete minutes are being taken and that you hear each and every concern, and then you address that concern throughout the deliberations over the next three meetings. Because, again, some of them are valid and maybe some aren't, but we need to know as a community that you understand what's exactly at stake. And as I sit here, my question is, what is the expansion of the landfill? I want it answered by you folks or the county. What's in it for me? You know, I'm a 60-year-old male with a wife, we're empty nesters now, and just to be able to explain that to the public, you know, whatever your decision is, but from our point of view, what is it that we get and what is it that we lose? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maureen Nelson, please approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. First off, I would like to say that the county should not entertain the acceptance of the 388 acres, allowing a landfill expansion up to 483 acres. We do not know what is underneath that soil. We do not need the responsibility, the liability, and the costs associated. We don't need to expand upon that land. We have 101 acres that belong to the county across the street. Wasn't it coincidental that the landfill operator came up with a wise use for that 101 acres? We want to do composting. We'll do it on the 101 acres, and we need an additional 78 acres too. No, 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 no. That's the county land, and that's where it can be expanded in future. I heard a resident talk about 50 years of land use. Well, guess what? We had 59 years left of land use in 2010, before we started bringing in 1,000 tons a day. San Benito County brings in less than 250 tons per day up to this date, up to this date, with the advanced housing development. Less than 250 tons. We do not need 1,000 tons. We do not need 2,300 tons, and we don't need to be bullied by a large corporation that is third in the nation. Cheap trash is an environmental danger. We do not need to take it. And when we start looking at smells, drive by Z-Best. You know what it smells like. I'd also like to reply to the Wednesday, Friday, Monday schedule- I'd also like to reply to the Wednesday, Friday, Monday schedule. Thank you for spreading it out. I think that that's not fair. These meetings usually occur on Wednesdays. I would suggest Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday. So people who come can come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and through Zoom, Luke Punakanta, you have been unmuted. You will have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Luke Punakanta and I am an attorney representing and commenting on behalf of San Benito High School District and its board. I just want to note that it appears the commission did not activate the Zoom until the end of the staff presentation, so I'm unclear about what has already happened. In any case, the district submitted an extensive comment letter on the draft EIR on September 2nd of last year urging the planning commission to revise and recirculate the EIR to bring it into compliance with CEQA. I'd like to highlight just a few issues further. First, the district is categorically opposed to any hall route along Best Road. On top of the impacts that route would cause to existing residents in the area, as the county is aware, the district needs to construct a second school site and Best Road is the only other property currently owned by the school district. The district is entrusted by county parents to ensure their students learn in a safe and healthy environment and the school district has serious concerns about student health and safety with a trash hall route running past the only property the district currently owns where it can construct the school. The county staff report implies that Best Road is a better alternative to the current hall route because it avoids the impacts to Rancho Santana School. However, this ignores the environmental impacts to any future students along Best Road and the surrounding communities served by the school district. Additionally, the traffic analysis technical study, which was not available for public review at the time of the draft EIR publication, does not accurately account for the truck trips along Best Road by ignoring the 72 one-way truck trips that use the existing hall route in the baseline scenario and it conflicts with the information presented in the findings of fact presented to the planning commission. Further, the draft EIR fails to address impacts associated with the roadway modifications that would be required by county municipal code if Best Road were to be selected as the hall route. Additionally, the county's responses to the district's comment.
Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Is there additional?
Yeah, sorry. I'm having some technical difficulty. Mary Coran, you have been unmuted. You will have two minutes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name's Mary and I'm opposed to the expansion of the John Smith landfill in order to accept garbage from mostly Silicon Valley. I think that our county made a pretty major mistake, the supervisors and staff, by allowing this over 10 years ago, but I think it's not too late to change strategies. The idea of allowing a huge for-profit corporation, Waste Connections, to do this dumping in our county and to also charge Silicon Valley residents less, according to a letter that I read from Selena Stotter, charging less than what local residents pay for garbage, the rate that is, that's really unfair, not very good business either. So just from a financial perspective, it doesn't make sense. And of course, many speakers before me have already pointed out the damage to our roads, the fact that the revenue doesn't seem to be adequate for our county to cover the cost, the contamination of groundwater to the air. Looking at it from a long term, this is really a huge financial and environmental mistake. So I urge you to reject, I think all of these proposals are pretty bad unless you choose the one that's no project. If you don't feel comfortable voting it down, I think you can recommend that the decision be up to the voters because I think that there's a lot of strong opinions in our community and I think it affects so many people that you should allow the voters to have more input. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Kent Gordon, you have been unmuted. You will have two minutes.
Thank you. I hope very much that you take into consideration the presentations that a number of the speakers have made relative to the nature of the kind of project you're talking about, which after you strip away a lot of the superfluous information, really amounts trading open space for money. And I think we really ought to think very carefully about whether or not increasing the dump to accommodate the needs of Santa Clara Valley is really in the best interest of the people of San Benito County. According to the plans that I read, the needs of the people of San Benito County can still be met on the existing dump site for at least another 50 years. To raise the fees, or excuse me, to increase the size of the dump and to allow a lot of out-of-county waste to come in is really basically a land-for-money kind of transaction. And with the downside problems of pollution, the downside problems of air quality problems, there are a lot of problems associated with this that I think ought to be very carefully considered. And primarily to me, what we really ought to be looking at is the needs of the people of San Benito County. And I don't feel like the needs of the people are very highly prioritized in the plan that you have in front of you. And I would urge the county, I would urge the planning commission to take a look at that and make sure that the needs of the people of the county are considered as a priority rather than the needs of the people of Santa Clara County, Monterey County, other counties where this trash originates. I hope you can do that and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
John Robles, you have been unmuted. You will have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. So good evening to everybody. I am vehemently opposed to dump expansion and I have a few comments to make about that. First off, regarding everybody's favorite subject, roads, we stand to get ripped off by a multi-billion dollar corporation. They're shirking their responsibility to the county with respect to roads when the potential for degradation of our roads is very high. Secondly, why are we taking in other counties' garbage at a discount to begin with? Another ripoff to the county. This whole thing is the equivalent of blowing lawn clippings into a neighbor's yard. Why would anybody even tolerate that? Traffic, I can't say enough about that. We already have congestion coming into all parts of the county, no matter what artery you bring traffic through. And also from an environmental impact, the damage to the Diablo Range as well as air quality, light pollution, it's all a downer for this project. I personally think this should be scrapped. We should not let a multi-billion dollar corporation come in and have their way with the people of San Benito County. Here's a novel thought. There's a capacity issue. Why not dump the expansion? Just get rid of it. We don't need extra capacity right away if this whole idea is scrapped. And one last item, proposing the dump along the corridor next to 25 is just ridiculous. How would you like to see that driving in?
Okay, Chair, there does not appear to be, oh.
Is there any additional public comment in the chambers?
Please approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, let's start with the fact that Z Best is in Santa Clara County. We don't know about a second high school out on Best Road. They did buy the property, but right now it's over $120 million and I don't know anyone who's going to go ahead and approve another bond for a school or any bond for that matter. It is 1.2 miles, the landfill is 1.2 miles. It's the closest ag farmland is that far away. There are back, traffic starts backing up in 101 over at the golf course off of 101. So it just doesn't happen at 25 and 101. And I do feel for the folks that get caught in traffic, but that's neither here nor there because that's, there's traffic in the entire state of California. Santa Clara County residents are paying approximately $100 per ton, including transportation. San Benito County residents pay only $44.70 per ton, including transportation for this service. Santa Cruz County pays $54 per ton. If we were to talk about a transfer station by not expanding it, we're talking about, depending on how many transfer stations, Santa Cruz County went ahead and had two transfer stations, but if we were to have one, it would be a cost of over, and this was two years ago, $18 million. The more you go, the more time passes, the more it's going to cost and San Benito County doesn't have 20 millions. I'm just going to throw that out for a transfer station. And there is nothing sneaky about this landfill expansion that has been going on for years. And so I kind of resent the fact that people are throwing out there that the planning commission is doing things behind closed doors, which is absolutely not, not true. In regards to the parameter, is monitoring the methane leaks from the landfill and there are no leaks as well as the water, but we can go with that into another time.
Thank you.
Okay, Christine Wyatt, Wyatt, thank you. You may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair Gibson, Planning Commission, neighbors and friends. My name is Christina Chavez Wyatt. I'm a resident and small business owner located at Sunny Slope and Fairview Road, member of the Chamber of Commerce Green Business Committee and a proud parent of two Spring Grove Tigers. The San Benito County Chamber of Commerce and the Business Council strongly support the county's continued efforts with the county's partner, Waste Solutions, to expand the John Smith Road landfill to the benefit of residents, businesses, local government schools and regional agencies. Established in 2001, the Business Council is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit member-based organization representing over 45 local and regional municipal agencies, employers, businesses, trade organizations, nonprofits and major employers, excuse me for repeating, representing more than 6,000 employees in the Monterey Bay, Central Coast and South Bay region. Our exec committee includes more than three county, former county supervisors and the chamber has 450 members. Following fact-based information delivered to our members and the executive leadership, we support the long-term retention and expansion of the John Smith Road landfill and have done so over the past 24-plus months based on many points of the following, which has been provided in the comment letter that was formally included in your packet. We have less than 13 years of space left in the landfill. If no expansion takes place, then we're going to run out of room whether we bring in out-of-county trash or not and we haven't done so since March of 2022. The county can't financially run the landfill on its own. We need a partner with expertise to run it, to make it operable for that partner. We have to be willing to bring in some out-of-county trash to offset the costs for dealing with our waste. If we don't expand, the landfill will close and we'll have to build a transfer station to send our own trash out of town. This will mean a significant increase in cost to our residents disproportionately affecting those with lower incomes, small businesses and a dramatic increase in litter and illegal dumping, which we've seen across the state of California.
Thank you.
Robert Rodriguez, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Hello, thank you very much. My name's Robert Rodriguez, longtime San Benito County resident. The reason I'm up here today is because I'm a hauler out here in San Benito County and the only reason I worry about is where are we going to take it after the landfill is not here? I worry very much about a lot of the businesses and the schools and the hospitals I haul for. They will, the waste is just going to increase, cost is going to increase a lot. I've had a long relationship with the county landfill. It's been great. I understand a lot of the reason why with traffic and environmental issues, but having my own facility, I understand how, you know, the state works with regulation and there is concerns, but we are very highly regulated and being out here concerns me with not having a landfill and being able to keep providing services at a very good cost for our residents and for my businesses that I provide for. It is going to increase costs a lot. If we don't have a landfill out here, we are going to increase a lot of costs with our residents. It may seem like it's not going to happen right now, but there is no, there is no other viable situation that is currently provided to us. They talked about building a transfer station out here. It costs a lot to do that and it's going to be a lot of money and it's going to be increasing the cost on a lot of other residents who may not be able to afford that. And I just hope that we can continue having a local landfill nearby to be able to provide great services to our, to our businesses and to our residents. And it may not sound like we are, but it will and I just do not want to see that happen. I just want to be able to keep our costs at a, at low cost as much, best as possible for us being a hauler. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Neil Anderson, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
My name is Neil Anderson. I'm a resident of San Benito County. I love our county. I love our mountains and our, and our wildlife and I like the fact that we have fresh air and that we can grow, grow vegetables that, that aren't contaminated with all sorts of carcinogenics and things that you're going to find in the water, which have already been found by the EPA, if you'd go back and look up some EPA studies. There's already a plume in the groundwater from the previous hazardous material waste disposal facility that was there that was closed. There was no liner. So that, that stuff's in the ground and it's going to be leaking to the ground for years. But it has been brought to my attention that Santa Clara pays a landfill fee at John Smith landfill of less than $35 per ton. Funds from the landfill to the county will not pay for damages and that, that's based on, on studies that, that we've found online. All this information is online. So, you know, we do our homework here. There's a lot of, I don't know, mis-studies and things like that. Let's get our numbers right. I don't see anywhere where taking garbage is an economically balanced solution. I, I studied environmental engineering for maybe 10 years at the universities and if we were to really do an economic breakdown of this, you'll find that the long-term costs are going to far, far outweigh the short-term benefits. There might be a few benefits here, but taking out of county garbage is probably one of the worst things you could do. We need a landfill. We need the one that we have to be managed properly. We need to have a place to dump our garbage and that's fine, but taking out of county garbage, I don't know who came up with an idea like that. That just sounds ridiculous and irresponsible to me. I, I couldn't support that or anybody that would be in the position of, you know, having that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And through Zoom, Carly, you have been unmuted. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Carly and I oppose this landfill. It's going to cause a lot of pollution. Light pollution is one of the things that some people don't think about. We're known for our county not having a lot of light pollution. People go up to the pinnacles and bring their telescopes and you can look at the stars and I personally love to go in my backyard and look at the stars. If we have this landfill approved, it's going to light up the sky and it's going to take away our view. It's also going to grow to about almost 30 feet higher than what is currently allowed. So that's going to make it almost 950 feet above sea level. I live within a five-mile radius of that dump and I'm probably going to be able to see it. And Elias Salinas, you live in Richmark, you're going to be able to see it too.
Please don't address people in the audience. Please address the commission as a whole and not people in the audience.
What was that?
Please address the commission and not people in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. I'm just really against the landfill and I don't see why we would accept garbage from five other counties as far away as San Mateo. Truck it in here. Make us known as the trash can of the Silicon Valley. We want to be known for our beauty, not for our stink. I think we need to do what's right. You guys need to do what's right and you know what's right. I think you know what's right. And listen to your heart and not your pockets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Terry Clark, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
How you doing, Commissioner? My name's Terry Clark, longtime resident of Hollister and got a few points. Number one is I hate politicians. From, from county to city to state. Number one is I hate politicians, from, from county to city to state to our federal government. Because when they get together and start doing games like this, they're nothing but lies, and we're going to get screwed. Okay? And I can care less about all these other counties. Let them deal with their problem. We need to take care of everybody right here in Hollister, and we always get-
Please don't interrupt speakers by clapping.
We always get screwed when, when stuff like this pops up. And I think it's a bunch of BS. This should go to the voters of everybody in Hollister and everybody in the county, whether or not this is approved or not. I'm for everybody dumping right here in Hollister. I don't care about Santa Clara County. Lived up there a long time ago. They're nothing but a bunch of morons anyways, and now we're getting them down here in our county. So I think you guys need to do the right thing and put this to the vote for the people because it's, it comes down to the bottom dollar. I mean, everybody's getting paid. I don't care if it's the county, city, or whatever. They all get their pockets full. And every time we turn around, stuff keeps happening like this. And I think it, it needs to land back on our shoulders. Let us vote for it. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment via Zoom?
There is no more public comment in chambers or via Zoom.
Okay, public comment is closed. Bree, if you'd please go back to the podium.
So I took notes on everything that we heard from the public today of issues addressed. For example, light pollution, odors that we didn't have on this list. So we can make sure that all the topics raised tonight are in the additional dates. We can provide a presentation tonight on the project that the commission would like, or we can just, the commission can decide on how you'd like to continue.
Commissioner Toledo.
I would like to state that I agree with one of the speakers who mentioned that we shouldn't have it spread out to such a short time, although it's convenient for me. I, I'll be here no matter what. However, I completely understand how other residents have to accommodate their time because of work. So if we can do it every Wednesday for several weeks to break down the meetings.
We have special meetings that would end up going in December. I'd, I'd rather not have it go on for two months. I'd rather have a concise grouping of meetings. I don't know what's your opinion, Commissioner Scagliotti?
My opinion is we use the three days that were, that we put up on the thing. What, the days, 25th?
I don't know if I can pull this back. October 25th, October 27th, and October 30th.
Keep it to those dates certain. Period.
That way, everybody knows what's going on from today forward, because there was a lot of confusion on Facebook and Nextdoor and every other app that's out there. So.
I have something else to say. Now, I have another recommendation, that we wait until Richard Way is present, and we wait until Supervisor Dom finds his own commission, so we have a full set of planning commissioners to make a drastic decision on, on this subject.
Commissioner Way will be back on the 25th, and Supervisor Zanger should have his appointees sworn in by the 25th as well. That is why the 25th was chosen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
They'll come in at this time.
Okay. I make, I make a motion to continue this until the 25th, provided with the schedule that we received from staff. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. carries 3-0. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. This meeting is adjourned. We will see you on the 25th.